All right, I'd like to welcome everybody. I'd like to call to order this April 5th, 2022 Board of Education Workshop Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing that we have on agenda is a public forum for agenda items in particular. On the agenda tonight, we have a discussion about our World Language Program. Is there any public comment regarding that? Okay, so then we move on to our student recognitions.
Oh, thanks Heidi. So tonight, we have our winter athletes here. Mr. Cantalino is here to go ahead and represent or recognize the kids here today. So as Mr. Cantalino comes to the podium here, we have a number of our students. So thank you for being here tonight and congratulations on a wonderful winter season. And I know we're a little bit roughly a month delayed from when we normally do that, but why not? It's everything is kind of impacted these days. So Mr. Cantalino, if you don't mind, just kind of presenting. So thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. So yes, we are a little bit behind, but as the weather keeps telling us outside, almost winter, so I guess we're getting there. So we do have some Scholar Athlete teams that we'd like to honor tonight, as well as some of our student athletes that did very well in the seasons. So first of all, I'd like to honor our Varsity Girls Basketball Team, and our captain is here, Amy Lasher. They receive the Scholar Athlete. And once again, just a reminder, that's the top 90% or 90% average of 75% of the student athletes on the team. So Amy, if you'd come up to accept this. I have to find it now. I had it in order. I did have them in order. There it is. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right.[144.12][144.12](Applause). Next, I would like our representatives for the Boys' Winter Track Team to come up, our coaches and our student athletes. So we have Coach Lacco and Coach Priceig here. Guys, if you'd go over to that side, so Paul gets a nice picture of you while you're coming up. We have Xander Peterson, Brandon Armstrong, Colin Brooks, Jared Google, and Brian Luciano. I think I got everybody right? Good. So our Boys' Winter Track Team won our league championship this year. So that goes to the coaches.[188.23][188.23](Applause). That was for Scholar Athlete also. So they were Scholar Athlete winners as well as the Winter League Champions. So congratulations, coaches.[202.26][202.26](Applause). I did get to go to the sectional championship, which was down at the Armory this year, finally. So, and we had three student athletes, and two of them are up here tonight, that did very well down there. Our first one was a bit of a surprise, and he surprised himself, which it was really, it was a phenomenal, one of the best experiences I've had here. He threw four feet longer than he'd ever thrown in the sectional championship for the weight throw, and he was just ecstatic. He kept going up to the official, asking him, "Can I see that score? Can I see that score?" He goes, "No, it's official, just, you're good." So Jared, please come up.[253.01][253.01](Applause). And Jared joined Brian Luciano at the state meet, and Brian won at the sectional meet, and then the state qualifier, excuse me, and then also placed third in the state and fourth overall in the Federation. So Brian's had a great career and looking forward to a good spring, and will be going off to Binghamton next year.[282.22][282.22](Applause). All right, I think I covered everything for the Winter Track Team. Did I announce, Coach?
No, you did.
I did. Thank you. All right, congratulations, guys.[296.12][296.12](Applause). And while they're going to sit, if I could have the Ladies' Track Team and Coach Fegliante, please come up, and Coach Priceig.[307.52][307.52](Laughter). So not only did this team make Scholar Athlete, but they set a standard and continue to set a standard. They won their 23rd consecutive Winter League Championship, which is quite a record and something that they should be very proud of. And then also, that day at the Armory, we had Megan Spencer qualify to go to the state meet also. She was number one in the section and did an outstanding job up at the state meet, and also will have a good spring season to look forward to. Thank you to the team. We have a couple of teams that couldn't make it tonight with representatives or coaches, but also our competitive cheer team and our ice hockey team made the Scholar Athlete Team, as well as our Boys Swim Team. And with the swim team, I just wanted to also announce that Jay Wilkinson came in second here in the section, excuse me, and also went to the state meet and did a terrific job. He also qualified in the 100-meter butterfly. So Jay couldn't be with us tonight. He's in the pool right now and heading to Florida tomorrow after school for some competitions down there this weekend. So we wish him the best of luck. Thank you, Jay.[439.53][439.53](Applause). And if I could have gymnastics, please come forward. So gymnastics, this is Coach Teodora Sapoy and McKenna Mullins. They also went to the state meet, won the sectional meet, won the divisional meet. And McKenna, up at the state meet, placed third in the bars and sixth all around, and the team came in fourth place. But what was nice last week is I got a note from the section coordinator saying that when they put everything together at the end of the season, our combined team of SOMers and the other programs that are part of us was the number one state team ranked in the state. So I wanted to announce that this evening.[497.53][497.53](Applause). So this is for Coach Sapoy, as well for the team championship. This is for McKenna going to the state championships, and this also goes to Coach for the Scholar Athlete. So congratulations on a terrific season, and I'd like to thank the board for having us, and congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantalino.
Thank you very much.
And I wanted to thank everybody for coming tonight. So if it's okay, we'll just take a quick, oh, five-minute timeout so the board can just congratulate everybody in person, and then if you'd like to stay, you can stay for the rest of the night, but I'm sure there are things to go. So we'll just take a break. Thank you, Paul. We'll just say thanks to everybody.
The next up is the central office report.
Thank you. And so again, appreciate everybody giving us an opportunity to just take a quick break there and congratulate our student athletes and their families, and hopefully get a good sense to see our work with our students, certainly in the classroom and then outside the classroom, and hopefully get a sense tonight of how well our students represent the school district in heading, not to just around the area, but to some of these state-recognized events in different areas in Syracuse, whatever it might be and things. So again, thank you for the board opportunity and opportunity to come in and have that conversation. So tonight, we're going to go ahead and look at a program that we have been looking and exploring for a number of years, and this is basically looking at our World Language Program and the expansion of our World Language Program to the elementary level. And again, Claire Comerford is here from our learning office, who's been running point on this program. So I'll go ahead and turn that over to Claire, and we'll go ahead and work this through. Again, work session, so questions along the way as we go through, so it's just a conversational part. Feel like I should have a little fire pit going here and things like that, but I think Chris or our Anthony DiMato would be a little upset if I lit a fire inside the school. So we'll just pretend there's something here. So I'll get some marshmallows, and we'll hand it over to Claire. So go ahead, Claire.
Great, thanks so much, and thanks for this opportunity to come together tonight to talk about Word Language in SOMers. For many years now, it's been a goal of the district to think about if we could expand language down to the younger levels. So much of the research supports that language acquisition at a younger age benefits students in all areas, including later language acquisition in their future endeavors, academic endeavors. In addition to this idea and goal of expanding language down to the younger levels, it's also been a mission of the World Language Department to transition to a more modern approach to language acquisition. For several years now, nationwide and even globally, the idea of language acquisition and how its best practices of language acquisition have changed. The new model is the Actful Standards for World Readiness and Language Acquisition, and our team came together in 2018, the World Language Team came together to rewrite their mission, vision, and values for the district and their approach to language instruction district-wide. And that approach kind of came, the result of that was this mission for the World Language Department to focus on listening and speaking skills and proficiency for students in the target language, enhancing and enriching the communicative confidence of students with the goal of students being able to communicate in the target language with native speakers. That was recognized as, not just in SOMers, but across in many, many districts, seen as one of the areas in need of improvement, was for students to be able to communicate. The old practice of language instruction was, it's probably how we were all taught, was more teacher-centered classroom, focused on teaching a lot of knowledge about the language, including grammar, et cetera, but not much use of the language. And so we're really turning that, the goal is to turn that over and increase the language use in the classroom on a daily basis. That curriculum rewriting started in 2018, was done with fidelity for two years, and then, of course, the past two years have put a pause, you know, didn't, not as much work was done in that area. We're looking to revitalize this effort, refocus on these goals of realigning to the World Readiness Standards for Language Acquisition and vertically aligning our curriculum so that language acquisition is more engaging and also authentic in the target language of every classroom. And so you can see the values that the team has come up with, that target language is the predominant language in communication in the classroom, wants students to communicate in the language. And then, of course, at the higher levels, then language, the grammar and the literary study of the language can happen at higher levels as well. So that's the kind of background of where the World Language Program and goals have been. In addition to that, the thought has been for a while to think about expanding it down to the lower levels, based on the research that is abundant, that language acquisition before the age of 10 helps students, students are much more receptive to language acquisition, and developing the skills and disposition of language acquisition at an earlier age will only increase their proficiency in future language study, whether it's the same language or not, and will improve their overall cognitive flexibility, as well as performance in all other academic areas moving forward. So that brings us to the goal that started this work that's been rebooted in the summer of 2021, which is thinking about moving the language down to the elementary level in SOMers Intermediate School. And that was kind of what started our thought process on the work. First, we started having these discussions with the World Language Department, the leaders, and then later the departments themselves. We worked with our regional partners in terms of really discussing what has been successful about FLESS models and not. FLES is the kind of catch-all phrase and term for elementary, foreign language at the elementary level. And that's, so that's the language we're using in talking about that, reaching out to our partners in terms of what has worked and what hasn't. And then, of course, we had partnered with Greg Duncan, starting in 2018, and he's been a consultant and a partner in discussing this work as well. He's a well-known national professional learning leader for world languages, and he's also working with several districts in Westchester County on this exact transition we're talking about, about realigning our instructional practices to the Actful Standards for World Readiness and Language Learning. As we started up this conversation in terms of what might this look like at the elementary level, we dove into the different models of FLESS instruction. There are three widely accepted models of FLESS instruction. One is immersion. This is a full immersion, where the second language is integrated into every aspect of the academic program throughout the day. This is a wonderful dual-language program that is predominant in districts with high levels of people who speak the second language. This isn't, this was one of the first ones where we said this probably isn't the right thing for SOMers. It's just, it's not meeting what we were thinking about in terms of language acquisition for SOMers, and immersion is not, was not, was kind of quickly off the table. The next were FLEX and.
So that's like, that's like using the language, the both languages during their math.
Exactly. So a math class is taught in both languages, dual, and everything is, so physical education, everything.
All the time.
The next is the FLEX model, which is very appealing, because as we all know, at the secondary level, we offer Italian, French, and Spanish here in SOMers. FLEX models introduce students to the three languages that they might come in contact with at the secondary level. But FLEX model is really, it's never done for more than one year, and it's very much a cultural phrase, kind of get-your-feet-wet type of program, which is lovely, but we were really looking for developing those skills and dispositions of language acquisition earlier, and the FLEX model is not designed to do that. So then we finally landed on the Sequential FLEX model, which is the introduction of one single language several times a week, with the development of language skills and culture within the parameters of the themes, topics, and content areas in the subject. And then, as our team worked and discussed it further, what we've, what we're really thinking about is taking the best elements of each one of these models. So the concern of introducing one single language in third and fourth grade, and then eventually fifth grade, is then, well, what happens at the secondary level to the other two languages that weren't introduced in third grade? And so we had, we're very, you know, the team is very concerned about that and ensuring that everyone understands that the learning of one language only increases your ability to be successful in learning another language, and that beginning in one language doesn't mean you have to stay in that same language, and that the skills and dispositions you learn at the elementary level can only improve your opportunities going forward at the secondary level. And so we're thinking of the FLEX model, the Sequential FLEX model, in third and fourth grade, choosing one single language, fifth grade, one single language, until the third trimester, in which a FLEX model will be introduced, where students will engage in a survey of all three languages offered at the secondary level in a short kind of trimester FLEX model, so that all students have a taste of what is offered in sixth grade, where they can choose any of the three languages at that level. The model itself will be more of a co-teach model with the general education teacher at the elementary level, which for that time period will resemble a bit of immersion, because what the teacher will do is be part of the grade-level teams, third, fourth grade, work with the teachers to determine where the organic and natural areas in the curriculum are, that they can come in and introduce the language, the language skills and content through the actual third and fourth grade curriculum in different curricular areas. And so it's, like I said, it's like kind of a combination of those three models.
So that would reduce, because obviously you're adding more studies in, you know, I guess the first thing that pops to my mind is what is that taking away from then?
Exactly.
This kind of mitigates it, where it's part of another lesson?
Right. The idea is that it absolutely is that co-teach, where the content, the content is still being taught, but there is this added element of the second language being introduced through that content.
Any challenge with like, so math instruction, if I struggle with math or whatever it might be, right? Any issue with kids struggling even further with now the introduction of a language in that, or?
I mean, that's certainly the possibility. It could be, it could also go the other way, but the general education teacher and any other support teachers are still in the classroom for the math instruction piece. So if anything, there's an added adult in the room. And then certainly for some of our other students who may be native speakers, it will be a different additional element, if that makes sense. So, you know, again, through, continuing through that process, the idea is to implement the Sequential In-Person FLEX model onto third and fourth grade. Right now, we're understanding that frequency is very important over time, so longer blocks is not ideal, but really kind of frequent, the frequency of the instruction. So we're working, the next steps will be to work with SIS to look at the schedule and determine how we can, you know, provide the best experience for our students at that level. And then the next step is choosing the language, right? We offer three languages. We offer Spanish, we offer French, we offer Italian at the secondary level. All three of these languages are Romance languages with Latin roots, so there's a lot of similarities in them, so learning one can only benefit and enhance and enrich the learning of the other two. And there are very strong pros to each one of these languages to determine which one will be, you know, implemented at the third-grade level. And we are just a couple of weeks from finally deciding on the language. We're continuing our study and our, working with our partners. We have our Tusker University this Thursday night, where we're looking to, you know, receive feedback. And then, of course, it also depends on the teacher, because it's really important to find the right teacher. So this is, this is kind of where we are in the process, but we, you know, we prioritized a few things in choosing the language. One is that it really needs to be in-person, so we need a, you know, a SOMers educator here full-time to deliver the in-person instruction. We want it to be reflective and inclusive of our local community and help students find success in future and global marketplace.
So you haven't decided what language you'll be selecting, or you have?
We have not.
And so you're going to be deciding based on what the community is interested in, what the children are interested in?
It, we're going.
I'm trying to understand how you're actually going to decide.
So we're, it's coming down to the teacher. World Language, like many other, there's a teacher shortage, particularly in World Language. It's very difficult to find World Language teachers right now, and I'm, and we've posted this position two weeks ago, and it's, we posted for a unicorn, is what we call it, because we're asking for dual-language certification with a FLEX extension, K6, and it's not easy to find. We are actively recruiting and trying to find the ideal person to provide the best experience for students, and that's, that's going to be a big part in the decision.
But it could be one of these three languages, and the person has to fit sort of that perfect mold of being able to do this work specifically within those classrooms.
That's right. It's probably going to be French or Spanish, just in terms of, you know, what benefit that provides to the future opportunities for students in terms of marketplaces, the North American marketplace and the global marketplace, both have different attributes that contribute to, you know, the strengths of those. And then we'll decide in the language once we see the certified candidate.
Claire, since the languages we're utilizing are Romance-based languages, was there any thought of maybe starting out with Latin?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, and if we were thinking to grow the program from kindergarten, perhaps that's a route that would have been considered. It's, and it's so rare now in terms of schools offering Latin. It was very popular at one time, but as we know, Latin is a great root language, foundational study language, but it's a, it's a dead language in terms of future use. So we'd rather start off with, you know, the Romance language that can be easily translated into other languages, if that's the idea.
A couple of questions. So this teacher is going to be scheduled into different gen ed teacher days, like an hour during math with so-and-so teacher, and infusing the language that is selected as part of the teaching?
Yes.
Okay. And then the scheduled with the understanding of frequency trumps time, I'm assuming that's obviously research-based, and I think I've heard that too at our schools. Is that for elementary level, or is that like at the high school level as well? Like with World Language acquisition, is it better to have frequency versus time? Because I think at the high school, there's block scheduling, which I'm a proponent of, I love it. But what does that do to World Language?
That's, it's one of the struggles, and the, it's definitely for the FLEX model for younger brains to continuously have that, the constant and frequent touches with the language acquisition, less so for secondary, but still important. And so that's why, as the teachers moved into the block schedules, they utilize Schoology and the technology tools that we have available to continue that language acquisition beyond the classroom and beyond the classroom times to fill in those gaps for the days that their class is dropped. But that is a concern always.
And the other thing that I was thinking of, if, this is like to have consecutive years of language exposure from third grade on, right? So if a kid is exposed from third grade on to say Spanish or French, could this kid be proficient, to what we think is proficient, that they would be in 12th grade now and maybe in 10th grade or 9th grade? I'm not saying that. And then what impact would that have on other languages? Teachers have said that. I can see a high-achieving kid who's like, "I love the language, I'm already accelerating. I don't want to take another language, I want to take computer science," because with block scheduling, it limits, right? So I do think about that. Will they have the opportunity to stop and be proficient in a language in 10th grade and then have other electives? Or are we expecting this kid to take from third grade to 12th grade and be extra proficient? You know, what is it that says that you should keep going? Because what if they're really good in 10th grade?
Yeah.
When do they stop?
So, great question. You know, really, the state requirement for languages, we know, is minimal, so students are stopping now, and this is one of the elements that we want to address and help students to, if they want to, continue their language acquisition into the later years. But no one will be forced to do that. They can still decide to, if they have other passions and interests, then a student, after they've met their state, their New York State requirement for language, they can certainly decide not to pursue.
Right, but that's minimal. Like you said, they just need like, you know, a couple science, I mean, those are just basic graduation.
Sure.
But I'm saying, if we wanted kids to graduate from SOMers, what do we consider proficiency in a language? And could that student meet those proficiency standards after, say, five consecutive years, starting in third grade? So that's eighth grade, for example, versus now? I'm not, I'm just giving, just, or do they have to go through 12 to meet the proficiency standard?
Great.[1703.65][1703.65](Laughter). So just, this is a perfect segue into, in our thinking, how we're going to measure our success. What are the success indicators for this World Language transition and introduction to the elementary level? And we're focusing on three areas. We're focusing on what you're talking about, Mary Rose, proficiency, and then longevity and diversity. So those are our three target areas to see where improvement may be. The way we measure proficiency and the way that was adopted in 2018 was to administer the Actful Assessment, Performance, Proficiency, Language Learning.[1745.24][1745.24](Laughter). It's the Apple exam. It's in alignment with the Actful Standards, and it is focused on primarily determining proficiency of listening and speaking in World Language acquisition. Previously, we've administered it in year two and year four, and the team has decided upon performance indicators for each of those progressive levels. Now, with this new introduction of it starting earlier, that will add another administration of this to be administered after year two earlier, and that will be, to be decided what the proficiency level for fifth grade should look like, and then year four, and then year six. And so while the answer is yes, absolutely, students can meet, I don't, I can't remember the exact, the highest level of proficiency set forth by Actful in terms of. the exact, the highest level of proficiency set forth by ACTFAL in terms of language acquisition. If, if they meet that and feel confident and conversant and comfortable and fluent, then absolutely. But as we all know, there's further, they could also go on to study literature in, in the language. And that's, that's something that's going to be up, up to the person.
Which is my follow-up, I think. And I think we're just kind of feeding each other in some way. If you introduce anything before, you've done before, so now we're introducing a language, foundational, elemental, elementary knowledge, grammar, whatever, how does each consecutive year change with that? So now if a kid's in third and fourth grade Spanish and has never taken it, it should not be what fifth grade looks like this year.
No, it shouldn't.
So how does each consecutive year change? Curricular-wise, pedagogy-wise, practices, proficiency?
So the team at the middle school has three years, right? And to look at what are the students, what are, what do they know and what are they able to, are able to do coming in? Because it's, in three years, it's going to change because that, we're going to have third graders coming to sixth grade who now have had, it's, it's probably won't be considered two full years. It might, you know, it's gonna-
It's gonna start incrementing.
Right. So the curriculum, the vertical alignment of the curriculum is starting now and, and will, that will be continued until those third, next year's third graders reach sixth grade.
Of only that one language?
Of that one language.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why it was so important and valuable to include the whole team in this, in this process because it requires the entire team, six through 12 now, to really be invested in the success of this, but also understand how it impacts their, their work going forward. And then for longevity, the, this is the, the, we're hoping that students with more confidence, communicative confidence and engagement because of the instructional changes that are continuing to happen. Some have happened, but we have more work to do, that they'll be more engaged and want to stay in, in the language for longer than just the minimum, beyond the minimum state requirements. And then finally, we're also hoping that some students decide to take another language and don't just stick with one, but kind of pursue this world language with the diversity of language throughout their secondary career. But of course, if the language isn't a student's interest, then it's not a student's interest. However, we, you know, we do encourage that acquisition. Did I answer?
Yeah. It's the hope, so then is the hope, to your point, Mary Rose, is the hope that they are, that students can become proficient at an earlier age so that in 10th grade, they can take a second language and then they can emerge with two languages under their belt? Or they can start the second language in eighth grade and then by the time they graduate, they have two languages that they're proficient in?
Or they're, they're competing, they're competing demands, right? I think, I think we want our kids to be good at everything, which is not possible. But you want to be good at language, you want to be good at STEM and coding. And so many kids can't take those courses because they're taking language. So that's what I think about a kid who's just really good at Spanish or French. By 10th grade, now that kid can take the computer science course that they could not have taken. I mean, that's, it opens possibilities.
Yes, yes.
To a language or something else.
Absolutely.
So kids may in theory be taking the AP exam in 10th grade then? So that's what I'm, I guess I'm trying to parse out is, is the goal to, yeah, for like an AP, a language exam, because is the goal, well, so IB they wouldn't be able to do in ninth and 10th grade. So they'd have to wait until ninth and 10th, till 11th and, 11th grade to be able to do IB for a foreign language? So kind of what does that do in that comparison? And I guess, I was just trying to understand, the goal, I hadn't thought the goal was to accelerate them, but more to just make them more proficient at the older ages. So are we anticipating that they may end up being accelerated and doing college-level Spanish earlier?
I think these are, I think these are questions that need to be ironed out. We need to see what, how, what exactly it means by continuing this examination and working with the team. That, the high school team, we're talking seven years down the line before that curriculum will change. So we'll have a lot of information and a lot of data to inform the decisions that will be made seven years from now.
So Claire, with your success indicators as a piece, I'd say we need to keep grounding ourselves back in here. So the proficiency level, we absolutely anticipate that will increase.
Mm-hmm.
We do offer world language in sixth grade, six through 12 now, bringing it earlier. The expectation is the proficiency level will increase at an early age. So that's a piece we'll be watching. Longevity-wise then is we'll be having baseline numbers as far as what percentage of students kind of are done at the state minimum? And then how many more years do they decide to take in that regard? And then the idea about diversity. So we've got kind of these three indicators that we'll be looking forward as we move. There'll be other positive indicators that we will be able to share that we may not kind of identify directly, but those are the three buckets that we're looking for success and say proficiency is there. Again, everything that we see and understand about the research is the younger we start that, the more retention that has, the more fluidity that students have. And again, I know Claire, you mentioned to me before about there's other side benefits. I don't know how to exactly measure, but that's relying upon the research. Say, look, then you have this, you know, dexterity of just thinking that by learning a second language at that level now, that you, I mean, better in mathematics, better in others. The reality is, is that you're now really thinking about a different way to find that success is going to be measured for our work and for these pieces is here. And so the other piece I want to think about here as well too, is the support of our educators in this work too. So I don't want to miss on that part. I know you mentioned that briefly, but that you've got coming up with a time through the, to the summer here and actually connecting with the SAS families there pretty soon at PTA meeting. So again, that engagement work, I appreciate what you and your social studies, national social studies, world language team are doing to work on this. It didn't start yesterday, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I, um, just rounding out that thought also, I thought I had Heidi, was you talked about the AP exam, is that if a student feels very proficient and ready to take, any student can challenge any AP exam. So that's also another option. So just so we're throwing that out there.
Claire, I just have one more question. As you're talking, I'm just thinking, so now if, if Spanish becomes a language in third grade, right? And we're obviously going to change the fifth grade curriculum and structure of a class in Spanish, because now third and fourth has been introduced. What does a fifth grade French class look like? Like another lang, like how does that, how does the structure in that class also change or not change? I mean, and again, this, you may not have answers to, but I, I think about that.
Yeah.
In terms of choice too, because we're talking on like, what's the, what's the next choice for language? If they look distinctly different, the student make a choice, I'm going to just stick with this language because wow, there's so much more, whatever, or not. Have you thought about that? How to align them in some way?
So I, I think what I heard your question is if, let's say the language is Spanish, then how does it impact sixth grade French?
Right.
Um, and the answer is, I, I, my immediate thought there, and this not fleshed out, is just, um, as with, there has to be formative assessment in the beginning of any school year to determine how that, how this Spanish has translated into French? And if the, if the, the curriculum needs to be realigned, but they'll also have that information in that end-of-year FLEX model we discussed. There certainly can be an assessment in that so that gives the sixth grade teachers information in terms of what students are coming, knowing and being able to do in the, you know, in the, in the, in the sixth grade. So that, that's a great point and thinking about how does this, because we, as we said, this sets the foundation for all Romance languages. And then do we need to realign all of our other curriculum to meet the, you know, meet the students who are coming? So that's another great point. Thank you.
You know, as, as everyone is sort of like chiming in, I'm thinking that now that we've had the language here in the middle school for three years, I'm wondering, do we have any data from the high school language teachers to talk about the difference in, in language proficiency of the students that are coming to them? Because now they've seen a couple of years of students now moving up to their grade. Do we have any of that? Not right the second, but that would be really, I think compelling information, right, to share that, that this is impactful.
Absolutely. Unfortunately, I will say COVID has-
Sure, for sure.
-booted a bit of that offline and, uh, tran, very transparently. So we're baselining it again and, and making sure that that data loop is closed that had been in existence before and making sure that it's going forward consistent so that everybody has the information they need to plan accordingly.
And can I ask the logistics question just because I want to make sure I understand this?
Sure.
So third and fourth grade, one language. The majority of fifth grade also that one language. The end of fifth grade getting the other two languages so that all the kids have the opportunity to pick which one in middle school. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
And even this year, the, the team has, has, has thought deeply about their practice of what, how, like, how do students change, choose the language in sixth grade anyway? There was a bit of a feeling that it was kind of haphazard. You want a hamburger or a hot dog? And, and so this year, the team put together videos, met with the SIS administration, showed videos of their classes and students and, um, opportunities for the language in the fifth grade town meetings and also changed the way that you requested it in terms of, what's your language choice? How certain are you? Is it 100%? Is it 50/50? And kind of, you know, determine, trying to get a sense for how students are choosing and why they're choosing the language they choose so that we can be responsive to that. And then the last bit is just the timeline of, of where this work started. As I said, officially in 2018, those, those, the mission, vision values were changed to be in accordance with the new, the ACTFAL standards to really transition the way that language is taught here in Somers. And that, that's an ongoing transition from 2018 to now and there, you know, and we're rebooting that and ensuring the rewriting of all those units to be more engaging, more authentic, more, um, uh, communication-based. And so that's all ongoing. And then I think we all know in 2019 was the first year we introduced the, you know, world language down to the sixth grade level, um, which, which has been a very positive experience for, for middle schoolers here and, and looking to continue that transition down to the lower grades. Now coming, coming out, you know, in summer of 2021, we looked at this idea of expanding language to the elementary level, decided on the model. Now implementation next year in third and fourth grade, fifth grade in the following year, 23, 24. All during that time, the team will be working on vertically aligning curriculum in the single language and, and also in the other two offerings at the secondary level. And then finally, by 2020, by 2024, we'll have language in Somers, grades three through 12. And the first, you know, class of that will be up in 2027. And then finally, that's just the next steps, just so we're all-
Sorry.
Yeah.
First students, this fall, you're expecting third and fourth grade to get to-
Yes.
Be getting instructions. And then planning first students with three to five world language.
Hit the high school.
Come to SMS. Sorry, thank you. It's small.
Yeah, I know, I can't read it either. I'm just, it's made for memory. So, uh, and then just, you know, the next steps. So we posted this position, uh, the 21st of March. And we've had, we've actually, you know, which is, it's, it's very difficult to find a world language teacher. So we have some really interesting prospects, which is great news. The next step will be determine the best candidate to grow the program, then decide on a language. And we're already working with the Somers Intermediate School team to determine the schedule and what, how that will fit and, and makes the most sense. The next, we want to engage with the third and fourth grade teams because their support, interest and positivity towards this program will be the success of it. And so it's really important that we work together as a team to, to, to determine that model and, and work with them to, to find, you know, create the best experience for kids. 22, 24 school year with the implementation of the fifth grade model with that flex at the end of it. And then all along, we need to create time and space for language three, three through 12 team to adjust and vertically align their curriculum for the anticipated changes this will bring about.
Why, um, why go to third grade and not earlier?
I don't want to assume that we're not going to go day two. So it, it just made the most sense. So I don't know how quickly we can get there. So really to say, bring it down, now we can go third through 12th grade and then we will be looking to bring that down to Primrose once we're able to go ahead and, and provide evidence that this is in the right pathway there. So, but the connectivity there is really important. So I don't think we would have anything other than that would be the place we'd ultimately land, but we want to be able to bring forth back to our, kind of our success indicators, proficiency, longevity and diversity. Say, ah, here's this information we have. And then again, from our local experience and the research, again, starting at even at a younger age, so.
How is diversity in, I, I didn't get that. What were the three things you said?
Looking at diversity of language choice.
Of choice, of choice, okay.
Yep. So having students choose more than one second language.
And then, are, did you say local schools are doing this FLESS program?
Some.
In the Hudson, Lower Hudson Valley?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. I'd love to know who they are, because-
Um, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I'll-
Yeah, that's great. I just love to know.
I did a survey of all the-
Okay, awesome.
And so, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, good.
So I just was thinking, I think the community will, I imagine that there'll be questions, no matter which language you go with, it sounds like you're deciding between Spanish and French. So I would imagine like there'll be some questions in the community about how you choose, which language you're choosing and, and why. And so, you know, like I certainly hadn't known that, I hadn't realized that French was actually that, that frequently spoken, you know, because it's just different based on the community. But you also talked about trying to choose a language that reflects the community more too. So I guess, and then the challenges of finding the right staff member. But I guess my concern is just knowing sort of the criteria, that being able to tell the community, you know, what language do we choose? And these are the reasons why we chose it. I'd be a little bit concerned about who you can hire being a guiding, just because that person might stay a year. You're like, you just don't know for sure. So making sure that, you know, if they're totally equal, then that would make sense. If you really like, there's pros and cons either way and you say, no matter which one we do, it's going to be equally the same.
Right, we certainly don't want the program dependent on one individual.
Right.
We want to make the decision.
So anybody out there, if you know somebody that can-
I was like, once you find them, I can't wait to meet them. Because that's, that's hard, I know.
So if you added Primrose, you'd need two unicorns, not just one.
Right, right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, that was, uh, so it is just one teacher we think could actually teach, successfully teach all three grades?
One teacher for third and fourth grade and then it would be a current staff member for the fifth grade model is the current-
Best thinking is we'll have a little bit of, of staffing that, and as we get a little smaller, secondary school level, that we can kind of repurpose and, and shift some of that staffing on to support that fifth grade level. That's what gives another year.
Current language teacher would, would support it. So a current language teacher would-
As we decrease our numbers at one end, we can shift FD to the other side.
Reallocation.
That's the current kind of thinking in that model.
Got it. By the way, the second most learned language, I'm guessing the first is English, or?
I think it's Mandarin.
Mandarin.
Why aren't we doing Mandarin?
Yeah.
Because that, that has come up.
Sure.
He's not here to ask.
Yeah. I mean, it's come up before. It's interesting why we're choosing, why we're not choosing to introduce, it's, again, just a question.
Sure.
Introducing that language.
Go ahead.
No, it's, it's-
I was just going to ask, to that, I mean, my assumption, maybe you're going to answer that, but it's, is it just because it's geographically located into the one country and it's so big? Or is it globally dispersed?
Yes, I mean, I'm, I, I think so. I'm not, I have to check my facts on that. But, you know, the question came up of Mandarin, why not Mandarin? We certainly have heard requests for Mandarin and, and, and bringing that in. And we've thought deeply about that. Is there, there are some districts who have gone the Mandarin route. When they do, it, when we, it just, it's the finding the world language teacher to teach one of the Romance languages is very difficult. Finding someone to teach Mandarin is also difficult and what it usually looks like is a virtual option. Mandarin is a, a, a language that in order to attain proficiency or reach proficiency in it, it's, it takes approximately 2,200 hours of study to become proficient in Mandarin. As for French and Spanish, it's about 600 hours. For English, it's less. English is the easiest language to learn and that's why so many countries have English[1679.01] as a second language, especially in business. Mandarin is, we, we wanted to prioritize in-person instruction, so that's, that's one thing. And, and we were really looking to introduce a language that feeds and enriches and enhances the, like I said before, the skills and dispositions of the languages we offer at the secondary level. And generally what happens with the introduction of Mandarin is it becomes a very elite and high performing program, but it is, it is elite and does, is not, it does not become a guaranteed experience for all students. It, it becomes a, a very rigorous and valuable program for a, a small majority, small minority of students within a school district. And we're really looking to enhance and increase opportunity for, and equity for all students to benefit from language acquisition. And so that kind of guides the decision-making there.
Yeah, and I think, I think Heidi, you said it before, also again, as the team comes closer, we want to make sure that we've got some feedback and that's what Thursday's about for the community to have a conversation about the language. We certainly realize and recognize that reflective of our local school community, the language that is most represented here is important. If you look at just our kindergarten class right now, as they're, they're in kindergarten, approximately 15%, 13 to 15% of Americans will speak Spanish right now. By the time they graduate from high school, it's approaching 50%. So the reality is, is what they're going to experience when they leave our school system in 13 years is going to be a number that's going to be 45 to 50% of folks are going to be speaking Spanish. That's just reflective of the, the increased numbers, the increased part that business is putting on there, say you may be learning a second language, but much later, the reality is of what, what the number of language here in North America is in there. Yet again, when you look at French, it's a global piece. So that's, that's kind of the wrestle piece there, a little bit of what it looks like. And then the last piece, that diversity about, well, let's not stop there. There's some dual opportunities that kids would like to be able to engage in. And frankly, and then Claire's been diving deep on this kind of research here is that that actually is more of a model that you would see in other parts of our country, but they don't stop at one second language. You're actually looking at a second language or sometimes three as a second language. I mean, it's multi-language, it's multiple languages that they're speaking. So that's where we're seeing it. If we just flash forward a number of years, not too far, that these kids will be in a different world that they're sitting in today. It's going to present different opportunities, but also different challenges. So if we don't prepare our students to find success in a global society, like our mission statement is, then we're kind of not, we're not following that. And that's one of the biggest pieces we see. The world is changing around us and we have to get ahead of that because if we're not set and ready and prepared to take that world on, again, with the Romance languages, there's an opportunity there. So whichever one that goes with, they can have some choice to go back and forth. But those numbers are just, are just too large to ignore. So, and that's not the case with, as we mentioned Mandarin, that is not the case that's taking place. And Claire, you mentioned, I think as we started, we know from coming COVID, we have to do this in person. We need live instruction with teachers in the classroom on a consistent basis. I mean, we're struggling with getting, I, I don't have any idea how we would get a Mandarin piece and talking about, you know, kind of putting it in one spot. You're putting all your baskets, eggs in that one basket and say, ooh. The reality is here, we can, and even work with growing our own candidates and doing some of that work. And hopefully in the coming years, we'll have more educators will be able to do that work, but we can't ignore those numbers. They're just too big. Claire, I just, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go.
No, I was just going to say thank you, I was trying to.
Oh, thank you. Well, I have so. Thank you for that. The, so I, I do have a question. And by the way, I, I think this is great. So, I mean, this, this aligns with our 21st century knowledge and skills, right? As far as our vision goes. You know, as we take a look at that, you know, the aptitude for our, our kids to be able to learn different things, you know, is, is only so much, right? Mary Rose triggers on, you, you did bring up a couple of things, right? As we look towards the 21st century, you know, have we evaluated programming? You know, and, and computer skills that, you know, kids, we need as adults in the 21st century, right? We're taking a look at, it's not just, hey, I'm going to the computer science, something like that, and I need computer skills, accountants, finance, you know, anybody, marketing, you know, you, you do need some kind of programming skills there. You know, have we looked at that as a curriculum? And how does that, where does that play into this? And does this, you know, kind of block that out or what? But, you know, how, how do we start looking at some of these other things to be able to drip in?
So I would say it wouldn't block it out. And so one of the pieces we, I think it's that our third year right now is in our, at the high school level, we've started with our AP computer science course, when that program, we've got an introductory class that started there. And now we're looking at bringing that actually into the middle school here. There's some initial coding that's being a part of our design element that's inside of the middle years program. That will be built inside the structure here. So those are, but we can certainly come back and talk about it, that as it works its way down even with some of our learning.com, which was an introductory access to some basic coding. We had started getting that and some piloting and kind of getting in a few classrooms and then COVID hit. So we're looking to bring that back online to looking at how can we have teachers? Because a generalist in an elementary level is probably not going to have access to a lot of coding background and knowledge unless we give them opportunity to have the children access that work. And that's where some of the technology would help in that. And that was learning.com that would assist in that. The new standards are coming on board as well too in the coming years about the technology and the skills and expectations and coding and being inside of there. So.
I just want to follow, I'm so glad you said it because I think STEAM has been the buzzword for a while. And, and it should be because we are moving towards that. I mean, just recently, the state ed released a computer science teacher certification requirement. I mean, there's a need, right? So I think about, now kids are self-teaching coding. I mean, there are kids who are in middle school and elementary that can code things. They don't need to be taught. So I wonder about, again, programming to meet the needs of those kids. Like we have an AP comp side course. Are there other courses that could meet those kids who are really? I just want to say, I feel really bad for Kevin Guidati right now because his head is probably popping off of his body.
Do not invite him to the table, Claire, please. Do not do that.
All the questions you're asking, what we're talking about is what he's thinking about and planning, the New York State Digital Literacy Standards, they have to be implemented. It is a mandate from New York State. It's coming. He's already working, he's already working with the team at the high school to determine how we can take advantage of this one chance to slide someone into computer science certification. So I'm sure he'll be sitting right where I'm sitting soon and he'll be talking to you in detail about those.
And again, we probably don't need a full, I think the, my point of the question, bringing it up now in this here is by, at some point, we're going to adopt this and say, this is, you know, what we want to do, right? It's not going to block out any, it's not a one or the other thing. So it still keeps the door open to that. Fine. So that, that's all, I just wanted to make sure. And then I'm looking forward to those other future conversations.
Thank you.
But thank you for this.
Thanks, Claire.
Thank you very much, Claire. So if any, we've got Thursday, just, just a reminder, Thursday, we're.
Yep, Thursday, Tusker University Family Focus. And this, this Thursday was planned around really parent feedback. So last year, parents are surveyed, what, what would you like to see more learning opportunities in for parents? And, and last year, it was largely focused on social, emotional supports and wellness. And so that's, we provided that last year. And, and this year overwhelmingly, parents are interested in academic programming. And so we're, Thursday is an opportunity for us to give updates on major changes. One is world language and then also the math pathways and the changes that have already happened in math pathways and what it means for students here. And then we also are, are bringing in representatives from K-12 curriculum and grade level areas to, to just engage in conversations with, with community members and parents and answer the questions that they might have. Really organic and, and seeking to engage people in authentic conversations about what they, what, you know, what it means for their students currently or in the future in the classrooms. And so it's really a focus on academics and trying to answer as many questions as we can and, and provide as much information to people as we can.
Thank you.
And that's this Thursday, Somers Middle School Library, six o'clock to 7:30. There's a invitation link that was sent out yesterday. We, we ask pre-registration just because we like to determine space and numbers. And there's a link to register there.
So just for, just for the sake of clarity, you sent out a survey to the parents and said, what are you interested in?
Mm-hmm.
And they said, social, emotional, and that's where you focus. So now when folks are saying, where is this content coming in? Where is this academic stuff coming in? We say, the community was surveyed, the parents said that they wanted an emphasis. And so we're being responsive to the community and providing the, the curriculum where they're interested.
Absolutely.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Claire. So I think we're off to board action?
Yes, okay. If I get back on. All right. So we are up to the business consent agenda. So now, yeah, thank you very much for, Claire, thank you for letting us have that discussion.
Thank you, thanks for the time.
And the questions and updating us on that. So the next item, be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, do we need any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Next one is a stipulation of settlement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and empowers the Superintendent of Schools to execute the stipulation of settlement concerning the impartial hearing convened for student number as indicated, and the superintendent is further authorized to take all action necessary to effectuate the terms of this agreement.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. And is that really, that's it? So we are down to public comments. I don't think we have any public here for comments, just making sure. There's no public comment out there?
Kevin?
Chris? Okay. All right. So then we are moving on to board member comments.
I am very, one, very happy that you're doing this with language and moving it down. I mean, I've, I've been, since I've been on the board, it's something that I've really been passionate about and I can't wait until I see that you've pushed it down to kindergarten.
I want to thank you for all the work you've put into making it happen, to explain it to us, to field all our questions, because the questions we have are really the questions the community has, so we appreciate that. And I do agree, and I love that you're thinking about what does, what do the consecutive years look like? Because we know if you start something, how do you not? So I appreciate that you're thinking about it and you're acting on it. And I can't wait to see what it brings.
Yeah, I want to just tag on to that. There's so much complexity that you had to consider in thinking what it would look like, moving it down, but also giving kids the ability to sort of see what their options are in front of them. And so thank you for your patience with us and answering our questions, but also in helping us see just how much you have planned into this, that it's not something that we're tossing down into the younger grades, but it's something that's very intentional, very deliberate. And I just want to give a shout out to our trustee, Yifei, who's not here with us today, but will be thrilled to hear that we asked about Mandarin. And we do hope that you are feeling better and able to join us again soon because we did miss you this evening.
He's probably watching.
No, yep, thank you for this. You said it well, but, yep, that's all I had on that. But the, I, I did also want to comment on a couple of weeks back, we did host, and I'm sure you're probably going to talk about it too, but I got to go to the WSEF STEM Science Fair. You know, I guess a lot of people don't get to attend. I think we had 10 students submit in it, what, and nine of them got awards on that there. But for me attending this thing, not knowing what to expect on this, it was awesome, right? You saw these kids that worked on projects that were like multi-year projects. And I didn't unfortunately get to see the projects because they didn't get to do them live on it. But the excitement in some of these kids going down, you know, and just high-fiving and just, you know, just the joy and, you know, forgetting the awards that they had. I was like, asked, I don't know, who else was, who was next to me? Was it Kevin? But I was getting into it too, just, you know, emotionally and just, you know, getting that energy for them. It was awesome to see and I think it's a huge win for, you know, Somers that we have it here. So, you know, thank you to, you know, Ray, the rest of the administration that was able to successfully kick that off. Yeah, and I'm looking forward to years to come and looking forward to be able to actually attend the, the conference itself. For those, any parents that are, you know, watching this, right? I would, you know, hopefully encourage that they do talk out to their science research, you know, teams and, and ask their kids why they're not doing that, but get them involved on it because I, I do think it teaches them some valuable lessons. You know, some of these kids are definitely in high school, walking away with, you know, patents and VC money, you know, before they're actually even starting college. So this is not the papier-mache volcanoes of the past. You know, this is some serious work and commitments. And, you know, I think teaching these kids, you know, a lot of life lessons. But I think more students should definitely be involved in it.
Anything, Chad?
Oh, no, I mean, I think that this is fantastic. I want to congratulate once again our student athletes who we, we honored earlier. It's carrying on, being successful in school, being successful, you know, the extracurricular activities, the, the WSEF. I mean, there, there's, that's a lot of extra effort that goes beyond the school day that I'm sure the kids will tell you is pretty long. And it's just fantastic to see the accomplishments and the dedication of, of so many of our Summer, Somers youths. And very promising for the future.
Yep. Good. Yeah, so I just want to say, yeah, again, you know, the, the discussion tonight is always that reminder of how as a district, you know, we're always trying to find ways to improve and add in new programs. So it's really exciting to hear. And all this complexity, you know, all that has to go into it, it, there's a lot. So thank you so much for all that, that work that you do. And I just also wanted to share a reminder for the board and just sort of letting the community know that we're beginning our process of our board self-evaluation. So we had some training before the meeting today. And then for trustees, just please remember to complete the self-evaluation ratings by the 22nd and get those back to me. If you need it emailed again, just let me know if you want a hard copy. I'm sure we can get, we can have that printed out, whichever works better. So that we'll have the discussion on the 26th to complete our evaluation process in executive session and start our process of goal setting. So just a reminder out there.
And then I'll just bring it to a close. So thanks again for the conversation this evening regarding the world language expansion down to the elementary level. And then a few of you, I heard you speak a little bit about, again, tying back to our mission statement about the engagement of our children. The opportunity for us to engage young children who are really just sponged at that point in time. It's a huge opportunity for us to bring that in there because some students really may struggle, maybe another container, this may be their strength there. So the opportunity for us to bring this to our children is, is really, I think we'll be surprised about, that'll be talking to our parents, they'll be talking to the kids as they go through that, as well as, you know, the other evidence that we'd have coming forward as well. So I would say that nothing other than good things will be heading in coming out of this. And so, the other part there too, of just the engagement work where Clara talked about with all the different groups that she's worked with across the piece. I think you and Lindsay mentioned before, engage with the community and say, hey, you came to the, the learning opportunities here. What would you like to kind of see in the next year? And then modifying off of that. So it's a constant flow because it obviously made sense last year exactly where folks were. And then now as we're coming closer, yeah, we want to get back into the educational part of things. So how can we do that? So the response of overhearing and that kind of dance back and forth is there. And again, like I said, it was, it was, it was great. The only bad thing, if you went to this thing is, so it was, it was great and the lights, they, they had like these two, they were like spinning lights and the whole thing. Our principal, I get one of those things? So, you know.